And to our... Our seats.
Call this meeting back to order at 7:09. The next item is citizens' requests and comments. For issues not on the agenda. State your name and limit your time to five minutes, please. This is for items not on the agenda.
Good evening. I won't take five minutes. First of all, you guys put on quite a show here, I must say. Congratulations, Chief Shepard. Congratulations to the entire city of High Springs. It looks like a good deal all around. My name is Mike Roth. I am the president of our Santa Fe River. I stood before you about two weeks ago and asked you to put something on the agenda regarding the Seven Springs water permit, and you did. And for that, I really want to thank you very much. I also want to say in the same breath that I totally understand why you withdrew it from the agenda this evening. Yeah, looking around. I see... So I did want to take the opportunity, however, to make a couple of comments again. I know this will be heard either in the next meeting or the meeting after that. I understand, too, that in our speaking around to various cities and towns, we have awakened the beast, and apparently, a lobbyist for the company Nestle has been contacting around. And I'm kind of fascinated that the beast is now watching us. A little scary. I wanted to say, it goes to kind of the character of the company we're dealing with. By the way, one confusion that I do want to put out there, I'm not sure, I think everybody may understand, but I understand some people still don't. This is not a Nestle permit we're talking about. This is a permit for Seven Springs Water Company. They have had the permit in the past. They will continue to have the permit. They contract to sell their water to Nestle, and Nestle's moved in this year to try and take advantage of that contract. Just wanted to make that clear. The kind of company we're dealing with has a lobbyist in Tallahassee now, calling the city and then making arrangements, finding out if how early people can show up. They're offering security, which, I don't know. I mean, I know you have a really competent chief now. You probably already, or always did, but you certainly do now. Anyway, that's just the nature of the company that we're dealing with. In 2015, they took, in California, they took 36 million gallons of water out of their system while the population of their area was on water restriction. When asked about it, their comment was, "We would take more if we could." So this is the nature of the company that we're dealing with, and I just want to put that out there. You may hear from them over the next couple of weeks, as you have heard from me. Everybody's lobbying their position, of course. In recent meetings, they're starting to trot out employees who speak of how great the company is to them, and how many people they employ, and they push that in a big way. Of course, don't lose sight of the fact that the number-one industry in the state of Florida is still tourism. Without the springs, we are nothing. Well, not nothing, but we lose a lot of our tourist appeal. And accordingly, these jobs, no matter how it looks, pale in comparison to the number of jobs that stand to be lost if our waterways are destroyed. So keep that in mind before I get to address you again down the road. And I thank you for bearing with me, and we'll see you soon.
Thank you.
Good evening. Mary-Lee Malwitz Gipson. I live in Fort White. I appreciate being able to come speak to you tonight off the agenda because I'm also here to talk about the water bottle permit. And I was here years ago, Mr. Williams, I think you were here then, when we were asking for stopping of four bottling plants back then. And the community all got together, in the surrounding community, in many different counties, and we were able to stop all four. So here we are again, faced with this renewal of a permit to extract 1,152 gallons a day. Some will say agriculture uses more water, or industry uses more water, what have you. But the reality is, this is an everyday 1,152, 1,152, 365 days a day, a year, 24/7, bulk transferring, because we know they're building a bulk transfer station at this facility. We know they'll probably have 370 trucks, empty, full, empty, full, empty, full, all day long. So also want to address that you are High Springs. Mike just addressed that we are tourism, recreational tourism. It's so nice to see your town thriving the way it is right now. I know I own a recreational tourism business, too, that gets its livelihood from clean water, from healthy springs, from healthy rivers, and we're thriving, too. The last thing we want to see is a crimp in that thrive. The last thing we want to see is detrimental extraction of our water resources. I mentioned in some paperwork I gave you last time I saw you, that this extraction, just to put it in perspective, is 14 towns of Fort White. They will extract the equivalent of 14 towns of water daily of Fort White. So when you talk about growing, and you talk about your city expanding, and we are seeing more people coming in from coastal communities and what have you, we need that water. And the resolution that we're asking you to support would be a public interest type of resolution. It's non-binding, it's not an ordinance, it's not something that says, "Hey, you know, I'm signing this resolution, it's, this is exactly the way it is." It's going to be sent to the Water Management District, not to Gilchrist County, not to another county, not to Nestle certainly, and not to even Seven Springs. It's going to be sent to the water managers who are legislatively mandated to issue or not issue water use permits, depending on reasonable and beneficial use, depending on will it harm existing users, and depending on public interest, which is where you are. Public interest. Thank you.
Thank you. Good evening.
Good evening. I'm Betty Shumpert, one of the senior citizens of High Springs. I'm just here for something nice. Not about water, but about eating. I want you to make a note, please, that November 9th will be our senior citizens' annual Thanksgiving banquet at the Civic Center, and it starts at 2:00. We invite, inviting all of you to come. And I want to thank Sister Nancy Levin, because she's been really pushing us and encouraging us, because she has been before. So please come and see what we do for senior citizens. I have become one, but I'm still trying to do it. But we'd just like to have you come and enjoy the Thanksgiving banquet we have at the Civic Center, November 9th at 2:00.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay, I will close the citizens' requests. First item in the business, under new business, is discuss and provide direction to staff on, to staff on procedure for allowing food trucks.
Madam Mayor, we will have Andrea True Parker walk us through where we are on this, and I'll just preface it all by saying a couple things. I think what we're looking for is maybe some guidance from the commission tonight, in terms of which direction they would like to go, if this, if the food truck ordinance is something that they, they would like staff to further look into, and we'll talk about what that process involves and what that might look like. And then, secondly, I know we have a lot of folks here today who are here specifically for this issue today, so I would just echo the comments that Attorney Walker made at our last meeting, which is, when that time comes, we just ask you to refrain from any abusive or defamatory language or anything like that, and direct all comments to the mayor. That's just the procedure that we follow here tonight, and I think that everybody did a very good job of that last time around, but we're just reminding everybody. So with that, we'll hand it over to Andrea.
Good evening, Commissioners. A few weeks ago, we talked about our current land development code, and Table 2.02.01 currently has no permitted use or special use for food trucks. So what we did is, we looked at several different ordinances throughout the state, Apalachia Cola being one, because they recently passed an updated ordinance, City of Gainesville, City of Newberry. In your packet, I believe you got, you also have Jacksonville, St. Petersburg, and looked at several different ordinances related to food trucks, to give you an idea of what an ordinance for the City of High Springs might look like. And if you, in your packet, you should have an ordinance that is a mashup of the most common provisions from all of those different ordinance on food trucks. So like Rich said tonight, we're just looking for guidance on what you like, what you don't like, or how you'd like to proceed on updating that land development code and doing regulations on food trucks.
I didn't see any attachments that she was talking about.
For other cities, we didn't get any attachments for the other cities. We only got this ordinance that you kind of put together. Preliminary, I guess, would be a good way to put it.
Okay, so then, what you're looking at, then, is really the most common themes from all those ordinances combined into one. So we, the ordinance in front of you, then, is the Apalachia Cola ordinance as a base, with, as you might see in the sections, different areas that were maybe a little bit more restrictive or less restrictive than other ordinances. Notes on, "Do you like this? How do you, how do you want to approach it?" For instance, in Apalachia Cola, they do not allow food trucks to have chairs in a dining area outside of the food truck. But I didn't see that in any other ordinance, so I highlighted to say, "Is this something that you're interested in?" As you could see in the zoning section, in Apalachia Cola, they're allowed, or food trucks are allowed in most commercial districts, in industrial and business commerce districts. In Gainesville, they're allowed in nearly all districts. So it really depends on, you know, how restrictive you want to be with the food trucks. Do you want them only in commercial? Is it only in C2? Whatever it may be. But it seems to be that most commercial and business and industrial zoning districts are the common places to see food trucks.
I just have a couple of questions. From what I read in this preliminary ordinance, it doesn't appear that the food trucks would be allowed on public city property, from what I saw. But then, in one area, it's asking for proof of insurance with naming City of High Springs as an additional insured party, and B for an amount of $500,000 per occurrence for injury and $200,000 per person. So why would we be named as an additional insured endorsement when it's not on city property, it's on private property that a business owns, and they've contracted with, or whatever the arrangement is, and they've met these other requirements? Why would we be named as an additional insured endorsement?
Absolutely. So one main reason for that is, there's also a special exception to have food trucks on public property, in the event that you're doing a food truck rally, you want them at the park, whatever it may be. And so, in that case, it would be important to have the additional insurance, as one example of why that would be necessary.
I can understand that. That I don't have a problem with. But just as a business owner, you know, additional insured endorsements and policies for different things sometimes comes at a large cost. So I'm just, as a business owner, because I've got that, you know, viewpoint, you know, I carry a million dollars' coverage for my business, but then if I go somewhere else, do I have to get another policy with another insured endorsement? That's the only thing that I'm concerned, that that might restrict out some of the people that, the different businesses are using by making that too high. I don't know, you know, what the standard is on that. So that's the only thing I was concerned about.
Absolutely. And Madam Mayor, I don't know any costs associated with the additional insurance. That is a provision that is in quite a few of the other ordinances, but not necessarily all of them. It's just to ensure protection for the city in the event something does happen, and a citizen were to come after the city as a result, to make sure we have the protection we need, so.
Madam Mayor, if I may add to that, I want to remind the commission that one of the options tonight is to not necessarily pass what's in front of them. I'm not sure that, and we do believe that this does need to go through planning and zoning before it comes, before it's passed, anyway, by the commission, first and foremost. But, but secondly, this is just really a starting point, and one of the directions the commission might give staff is to take this to planning and zoning, and before planning and zoning even brings back an ordinance that is recommended, they come back with maybe a further, more detailed report on some of these issues. But one thing I would comment on with respect to the insurance issue, it could be costly. I know of some situations where it actually ends up not being very costly, but I think we can look at whether this would be cost prohibitive for certain applicants. But secondly, I always give this speech to almost any client, when, when, when there's a claim that's made, we can't necessarily stop that claim from being made, other than defending it. So it's definitely, to Ms. Parker's point, it's more beneficial for the city to be an additional insured, just in case that occurrence were to take place. Maybe there is a claim made against the city, and we are, we find ourselves in a situation where we just have to defend it. It doesn't mean that it's, it's a claim that would prevail. It doesn't mean that it's a, it's a claim that has merit, but we still have to defend it. And so in that scenario, I would say that it would be better off that the city be an additional insured, so we had that additional protection. That said, I think it's something that can be vetted further, you know, looking at the cost associated with that, and that sort of thing.
And for an example on that, just to, to the point of whether or not to include insurance, the City of Gainesville does require the city to be listed as an additional insured, but the City of Jacksonville does not. So what, again, is really the commission's preference on what kind of restrictions, and what kind of rules you'd like to outline for regulating food trucks.
Does anyone have any questions or concerns?
I would just simply say, I would, I would be in favor of it. In my job with the school board, I see this all the time. And so I would, I would be in favor of the certificate of insurance naming the city, because they're going to come after the city, because we're actually permitting, allowing them to come there. So I don't, I don't think the cost, we could look at it, all they have to do, they have to carry the insurance, they're just getting a certificate naming us as additional insureds. I don't, I don't believe there's a great cost to that. You're just extending the coverage out. We can look at that. I know from the school district, we do this, this is a part of our process. If you're going to come into our, any of our facilities, I think you have to have that. So I would be in favor of that. Obviously, you could come up, we could find it, but I do think that protects everybody. So I would want that included.
I think the chamber has to get one, too, when we have the special events, with the Pioneer Days and the other events that the chamber sponsors, we have to get insurance for that as well.
Well, I haven't had a chance to look at it yet, so. But the process is to take it to planning board, and then they bring it back to us, and then we kind of...
Right. Ideally, the planning board would come up with a proposed ordinance that they would recommend be passed by the commission. The goal would be to make it as efficient as possible, and, you know, it can happen where an ordinance is brought before the commission, and then the commission looks at it and has a half dozen changes for, to it, and then it goes back and forth and back and forth. So that's why I suggest, as one option, it may be, rather than going through that process, we're happy to do that, but another option would be to just direct the planning board to put together a report and come back to the commission on it, and, and maybe further develop some of the ideas that are in this initial draft ordinance that's in front of us tonight.
So I'm pretty much in favor of taking that route, and then it come back to us, and then we discuss, and then we kind of...
So it would go to the planning board or the planning department?
Planning and zoning board.
Okay.
Because it involves, and there's some language towards the tail end, where it involves an amendment to the land development code. So we absolutely have to go through planning and zoning, and then, once an ordinance is put in front of the commission, if it's passed on first reading, it still has to sit for second reading.
Let me ask a question. And I guess I want to get the right, page three. I'm having a hard time with "I." It's all highlighted, or I highlighted it in yellow, I guess. The property owner number three, and then there's "I." I'm not understanding the "I," and then the one through six. To me, that's laying a layer of documentation and so forth. I don't care about this, thinking what the, what the place looks like, where they're going, or giving me a diagram of the land where the thing. I mean, that doesn't matter to me. They got to be on the deal. So I question why that's in there. I understand it was taken from others. I mean, I would think, dump that. I agree with the deal. I'd like to see something get done. What I don't want to see is this thing six months, and these people are still here, and they're talking to us. And that's what I found with my deal with government. I don't like government folks. I was in private business before, and I'm not trying to be joking on it. They've been patient. I want to see something get done. I think most of us do. I want, I want there to be, to be able to use these, but I also want there to be restrictions. I don't want, I'll be quite out there, I don't want a food truck just to be able to pull off to the side of the street and do it. It's got to be on a private, private, I think we're all in agreement. I don't want somebody just to be able to do that. But I would like to, this needs, if we're going to do this, this needs to be expedited, presented, and bagged as quickly as we can. They've been patient, and we just need to make sure we don't exhaust their patience. So whatever, Madam Mayor, whatever we can do as far as from a timeframe, I don't know how we do that. To me, it would just be, let's do what needs to be done to get it as quickly as possible.
So when do the next meeting for the planning board and zoning? Do they have to schedule a meeting?
They'd have to schedule it.
So can we go, get it, get them, November? We've got to go through the procedure.
No, no, I, I understand that. This is what I don't like about sitting here, is the procedural junk that you have to go through. But you have to do it. And I'm not trying to, I'm not trying to make light of it or be a smart aleck. I understand it. But they have to know there's light at the end of the tunnel here, and this isn't something six months from now, they're coming back here wanting. That's all I'm trying to get at. They need to have some sort of idea from a timeframe, what are we, what are we doing? Where are we going? So if we do it in November, if they get the planning and zoning board in November, give me a timeframe on how that works. So they do it, it comes back to us, are we talking the first of the year?
It's possible. It depends on the planning board. If they reach a decision at the first meeting, then it could go to the commission soon after. But if they can't reach a decision, and they postpone until their next meeting, then it makes it go a little further. But if they can settle it out in November, then we could do our advertising and hold. It would probably be mid-January or July.
Because we only have the one meeting in December.
There's obviously always the option of a special commission meeting. It could be called at some point.
Yes. And Madam Mayor, if we're trying to attempt to get a final product done in one P&amp;Z meeting, it may help the board to know, maybe if they want food trucks to be permitted uses, special uses, conditional uses. I imagine that might be a little bit of a debate of what procedure is a food truck needs to go through in order to get the ability to operate within the city. So if that's something you'd like to give some insight in, now, we could bring that as a starting point at the workshop, or at the P&amp;Z meeting, and hopefully help speed things along.
Okay. Bill, you wanted to say something?
We can convene the planning and zoning boards pretty quickly. They're a good bunch of folks. And I believe that's probably the venue to discuss this issue with public input. It seems to work out well in that setting, and we can come back to you within a month. I don't see it taking any longer. Like I say, the board meets, they'll meet pretty well. They come together pretty well, so. But that's kind of my belief.
That's good to hear. Commissioner Levin, did you have something else?
No. I just, I, with Commissioner Jameson, you know, they've been, they've been real patient. And Mr. DeCoursey, we still have some sort of temporary arrangement in place to allow them on certain days to have the food trucks, so that there's something ongoing on a special temporary reprieve or permit or something?
Madam Mayor, it's Monday, Friday, and Saturday, right, for now?
Do you need any? Yes.
I need to caution a little bit on the food truck thing, from a fire department standpoint. And under 633, state statute 633-081, the fire department or the municipality within our district, we have the right, as the authority, have a jurisdiction to inspect any newer existing hood system. hood systems, within a restaurant, mobile food vendor, so forth, so on. I've looked into this a little bit, some other departments, Mount Dora being one of them. We may want to look at that one. It seems to be not one of the most strictest, but one of the most fair, if you will, where they require food vendors to apply for a permit every six months and go through a fire inspection, because we have to do generator grounding, we have to do propane, we have to look at the hood system. There are several things in there that we need to look at. I've looked at the ordinance a little bit, but there are some areas that we need to get some clarification on and get the gray out of them, just so everybody's on the same page, and we can make this work in a timely manner.
Okay.
That's just my suggestion.
Thank you.
Let me just comment, if you don't mind on that real quick. And you guys jump in here. So a lot of that depends on what we allow. If you get into a mobile kitchen, a canteen truck, or a food vendor, so a lot depends on what they do. Are you going, the classifications, one allows them to cook on it, the other one simply is to serve from it. So a lot would depend on what is actually arrived at on the process.
Correct. There's different levels. So the ones that prepare within, within the truck are different than the ones that prepare off-site and then serve for meals from the truck, or the trailer, or whatever. I mean, a lot of people aren't aware, like for Pioneer Days, it's a large event that we have, we go out as a fire department on Friday night and do inspections on all the cooking sites. Check propane, we check, make sure that fire extinguishers, we run through them. A lot of people aren't aware of that. We do it after hours. A lot of people don't even see us or even know it happens. We do it with the farmer's market. If they're doing any event that has cooking on site, we require certain steps or then to go through. So that's kind of why I was bringing up, like Mount Dora, is they give a six-month permit. The reason they do six months is because most of the hood systems are, have to be re-inspected in six months. It's just making sure they're following the system. So making sure that we're providing safe services at that point in time, making sure they have their inspections, which they all do. We don't have any issues with it, but we need, for the liability standpoint, we're talking about insurances and things along those lines, we need to be able to do an inspection. And we have, it's not just me as an inspector on staff anymore. We have two lieutenants that are on duty also that can provide inspections as well. So there's, we have avenues that we can make this, I don't want to say easy, but we can accommodate this a lot better now than what we could have five years ago.
Is there any more information that you need to move forward to set up a meeting with the planning board?
Again, we'll, we'll plan and we're together, have an open format. Fire chief will be there, police chief will be there, they need to be. And we'll bring back an ordinance.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. So just semi...
Okay. Is that okay with you?
I think we understand our instructions.
Okay.
From the city attorney's standpoint. And I do think that it would be of value for city attorney's office to meet with the chief of police, fire department, and maybe vet some of these issues even before that planning board meeting. So we can maybe tweak some of this language here, and already have something further developed for the planning board to consider.
Okay.
Bill, how does the public know when a planning and zoning board meeting is made, so they can be there to talk? How do they, how are they informed?
Well, we used to put it on a sign out front. Jenny advertises it on the website.
So where would they look?
Oh, yeah.
The website?
Right, on the website.
Okay. I just want to make sure that...
Oh, yeah. Has to be advertised.
That they're there, they have the opportunity to speak.
Right.
Okay. We can move on to item two. Consider approval of the purchase of eight recertified fully automatic AEDs. Bruce? Would you like to speak to that? No. I thought you were going to do the...
Oh, the AEDs?
Yes.
We were having sidebar problems.
I have enough trouble. I don't need anybody to help me.
We were trying to clarify something real quick, sorry.
Okay.
So in front of you, you have a request from myself and Parks and Recs for approval of eight automatic defibrillators. With that request, you will see four have hard cases with them, that'll be static at locations throughout the city, and then there are what's called four sports packs in there as well. The four sports packs will be mobile AEDs that will be set out for larger events or put into the concession stands at the ball fields when they're having events out there as well. We felt like having something that we can move around and redeploy in different areas was a smart move, with the fact that concession stands do get vandalized from time to time, that we didn't want to go losing a thousand-dollar AED. There's been a couple of questions about the recertified portion of it. We went with the recertified G3s, because that's what we're currently using within the fire department, and is the standard in most of the police cars at this point, or was. And what we currently have within the fire department and with the addition of ALS, the pads that are on the G3s work with our current equipment.
Okay.
So we reached out to Wild Spaces to see if anybody's done anything like this with AEDs. We were told no. So we put our case with them, what we were trying to do, they thought it was a fantastic idea, Wild Spaces has approved it. So the funding source would come from Wild Spaces money, and my recommendation, I think, is a great thing. Damon, if he was here, he had a prior obligation, he had to attend, would agree with me on this, and it's something that we needed for a long time. If anybody's got any questions, I'll answer them best I can.
Since Wild Spaces is paying for it, I don't think financially we have to, but I have a problem, right?
Yeah.
And they are excellent devices to have.
And then the four, the four that are portable, like when we're having soccer events or whatever, you could have more than one at, when you have them playing front field, back field, you could, you could have them in more than one location there.
Yes, ma'am. So what we factored in is, we do run into a lot of events where we have soccer at the sports complex, and we have a baseball event over at Memorial Park. And we kind of figured out how many teams we had, and went and said, okay, we believe we can cover it with four. So that would put two at sports complex, and could put one up at Memorial Park, and then possibly one over at the Civic Center if we needed it at those ball fields as well, depending on the dynamic of what was going on for the weekend.
So I, just a question, how would, who would be in charge of those as they're portably being used? Is there somebody going to be on site from staff?
Parks and Recs will handle getting them out for the event, and then we'll be in charge of picking them up as well.
Okay.
Any other comments? Questions?
No, the only question, I guess I need to go back to being a sarcastic individual.
Because the room is cleared.
I know. But no, and I'm, and I'm saying this somewhat sarcastically on the deal, so if you're telling me it's not going to cost us coming to Wild Spaces, you got to tell me, why wouldn't we do this?
I don't have an answer for that.
And I would, I mean, you've played right into that perfectly.
It's a formality, do the cost.
Right.
Commission has to approve it.
Right. As I'm saying, there is no reason not to, to not have this available, as Nancy said, as far as you have young kids playing soccer or baseball, if something happens, you have it, there's no reason not to.
That was the other reason with the G3s as well, is because they do work on the younger kids.
Right. And that's the five-year-olds in sort of, right?
Correct. So we will be able to work, they will work on the younger kids, where some of the, some of the older ones and some of the newer ones will not, so you have to be specific for it.
Okay. What's the lifespan on these?
These will, I mean, we've had ours for six or seven years at this point. The lifespan on these are pretty good. The batteries we'll have to replace probably after two, depending on use and checks and things along those lines. But that's really going to be the only maintenance on them. We've got all the software where we can download what we need to on them, and then the updates. The G3's been around a while. I'd say we'd probably get five to seven years out of them before they won't do any more updates on them. But other than that, we shouldn't have any issues.
I was sort of wondering about that myself, in terms of duration, simply because it's a recertified.
They are recertified. They, so the recertified units are sent, sent back for issues. Somebody broke off a, the tab for one of the pads inside, and they had to replace that piece, and they were under warranty, so they're recertified and are selling them. By doing the recertified route, essentially, we're getting a amount of price of two for one.
Okay. So it's not necessarily operational?
Correct.
Oh, okay.
They are completely recertified, they have the same warranty as we bought a new one, they have the same life expectancy, there's no, there's no change.
Oh, okay.
Where if we would have bought a G5, it would have been somewhere in the neighborhood of about thirty-five-hundred dollars.
Right.
With the cabinet.
Do I hear a motion?
You need a motion?
Go ahead.
Wait. So have Damon talked with that board that oversee the Wild Spaces money?
Correct. They have completely approved the program. They actually kind of started scratching their head and wondered why other people weren't doing it. So we've been asked to present this to some other places, and they're going to make it part of the Wild Spaces package. They think it's a good, good idea and a good program.
Great. Okay.
All right. Well, considering the fact that Wild Spaces is going to pay the total cost for this, I will make a motion that these eight automatic AEDs be approved for purchase.
I'll second that. It's been moved and seconded that we approve the purchase of eight AEDs. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five-zero. Okay. Item number three, discuss and provide direction to staff regarding the Tobacco Twenty-One Alachua County ordinance. Is there someone here to speak on that?
Madam Mayor, I don't know if there's somebody other than the city attorney's office who's here to speak on this, but this ordinance from the county went into effect earlier this week on October 22nd, so again, Ms. Parker is going to walk us through some components of the statute, or the ordinance, and then there's a, there's an option for a municipality in Alachua County to opt out of being governed by this ordinance. So after we hear that presentation from Ms. Parker, we would, we would ask the commission to maybe have some discussion on whether they would like to opt out, whether it makes sense for the city of High Springs, or, or not.
Good evening again. As Mr. Maltley was saying, in Alachua County, they just recently passed 2019-04, which was, it went into effect October 22nd, and it's the Tobacco Twenty-One ordinance, which essentially raises the age to 21 before you can purchase tobacco. And it really, it regulates the sale of tobacco to anyone under the age of 21. With that, it requires the businesses within the county to purchase an annual license. It's $230 for the license. Any new businesses coming in that would be within a thousand feet of a public school would not be eligible to purchase the business license, so they cannot sell tobacco products. And it, as Mr. Maltley said, it gives you the option to opt out of the ordinance. So really, the, the main takeaways here are, there's a business, an annual license, and it's increasing the age to 21 to be able to purchase tobacco products. And we just, again, wanted to bring that to the commission and see if you had any thoughts, or...
I initially thought, of course, anything to keep people from smoking would be a good thing, but it does cause some issues with people who sell cigarettes. This doesn't affect the vaping, does it?
It does. This goes into effect, or now that it's in effect, it affects the age for vaping, e-cigarettes, and, and all tobacco products except for cessation products.
Okay. And it has brought, been brought to my attention that if you can put your life on the line to serve for your country, you shouldn't be told that you can't purchase cigarettes. It's kind of the way they say it with alcohol as well, but I understand the age 21 there, unless you're on base. I'm not as convinced as I was before to put a blanket over this and say that we want to opt in. How's everybody else feel?
I feel the important part of that ordinance is the vaping, that there's some controls on the vaping, because as it stands, prior to that, I don't believe that there was, you know. So even small, young children, 12-year-olds, could buy vaping products and materials. That was my understanding.
The countywide ordinance prior to the Tobacco Twenty-One had a restriction on vaping products to anyone under the age of 18.
Under age.
Do you have the LDC for High Springs?
Yeah. Yeah, it's, I mean, I've got the hard copy here.
I'm not sure if High Springs had one specifically, but Alachua County does have regulations as far as vaping goes.
I don't think they can purchase under 18, can they?
Vaping?
They cannot.
Okay.
I'll double-check in, in your code right now, but my understanding is that there's an Alachua County, well, there is an Alachua County ordinance that prohibits the sale of vaping, e-cigarettes, et cetera, to children under the age of 18.
Right.
And there is also a state statute on that.
Okay.
Any other questions?
I guess I'll state the opinion, I guess. I'm a proponent of personal responsibility. I think if a person's old enough to vote for the President of the United States, if a person's old enough to vote, we trust them to be able to do that. I would agree with the others, as far as the military, you're old enough to voluntarily go serve your country and possibly die in the course of that, and then to turn around and say, but we know better than you on how to run your life and how to do your life. I have a conflict with that. You're smart enough and mature enough to make these two major decisions, but you're not smart enough to know what to put in your body. And so I'm not for it. I questioned this back in 18. I asked for more information, it never came back, for this reason. The other thing that concerns me, which I said back in 2018, is just what you sort of alluded to, is we pass this, and all of a sudden, they go in there, now we've opened the door, to where now we can raise it, they can, gosh darn it, I said it earlier, government has a way of taking something, and all of a sudden, you look at it, and what they're enforcing now is not, not what was intended.
Right.
So I don't want Big Brother coming in and telling somebody, an 18-year-old who's an adult, legally an adult, what they can do. They make the wrong, look, I say this, folks, and it's, my mother died of cancer from smoking. I understand the travesty that it does. I mean, I fully understand it. But at some point in time, you're responsible for what you do to your life, and if you're going to be an adult at 18, you could be able to, but you're not smart enough to do this, I'm not for it.
And Madam Mayor, in the High Springs Code of Ordinances, it's section 50-7, sale of e-cigarettes to minors prohibited. So we have a section in our Code of Ordinances as well prohibiting the sale of e-cigarettes or liquid nicotine.
Okay. That was, that's the only thing I was concerned with, is, you know, they don't have the maturity or the judgment when they're younger to, to understand the damage being done by the e-cigarettes and the chemicals that are in the vaping solution, so...
Unfortunately, they get a hold of it anyway.
I know, but...
Yeah, and that's one I was going to get to me.
Yeah.
I was smoking at the age of 16.
Yeah.
Couldn't go to the store and buy them, but I'm not alone in the room, but we got them in the house. Some kind of way you're going to get them, so. I don't know. I don't know. I don't know.
Can I ask you, can I ask a question? And I guess we'll have to take a vote, right, to either opt in or opt out?
Right.
That's right. So what we would recommend, if the, a motion could be made to opt out of the Tobacco Twenty-One ordinance, and give staff direction to come back with an ordinance that we do first reading on at the next meeting, second reading, but the motion would basically be two parts. One, to opt out tonight, and two, to draft an ordinance that solidifies that.
So now, if we opt out, that means they can still legally buy tobacco product here in High Springs?
Yes.
Does that mean...
But you still have to be over 18.
Yes.
Right, right, right.
And do they have to get the, do they have to get the, the license, the dealer's license that the county is requiring in their...
No, this is opting out altogether from that licensing requirement.
Prevents those businesses from having...
From the ordinance, every component of the ordinance. The county has given the municipality the ability to opt out of the entire ordinance, including all the licensing requirements there in that ordinance.
Because the reality is, who's going to enforce it? You know, we don't have enough people to enforce other laws that are critically important, so...
Enforcing that, that means the store owner, how they have proof of age. So that's, that's on them.
Right.
To get the, the proof of age, they have to show their, their license, some kind of ID to show that they are of age. Now, for us, chief and all officers, they can't run around and say, okay, you, that's Now, for us, chief and all officers, they can't run around and say, okay, you, that's not their job. You know, smoking, is it bad for you, huh? I'm not speaking from what else, somebody else, I'm speaking on what I know. Doctor told me I could smoke and die or quit and live. So I decided to quit.
Well, do I hear a motion?
I'll make a motion. We opt out of it.
And again, we, we can do it in two separate motions, or you can do it in one motion. If the motion is to opt out, then the second part of that would be to also direct staff to bring back an ordinance.
So I'll make a motion. We opt out of it and you guys do what you just said, come back with the, an ordinance.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the tobacco, or opt out of the Tobacco Twenty-One of Alachua County and ask that our attorneys come back with an ordinance for us to approve. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item is review of qualifications for engineering services for water treatment plant facility.
Madam Mayor.
Yes, sir.
Commissioners. This is a resolution to accept the qualifications of an engineering firm to come up with an engineering plan for our new proposed water treatment plant. That's simply what it is. We put an RFQ out a month ago, two months ago, and we had one firm, one firm only. So that's what this resolution does. It will allow us to move forward with the plans, and it will also allow us to get on, be available for state funding for, for this new water plant. So it, it is, this is your very, very first step in moving forward to get a new water treatment facility in the City of High Springs. Just a very simple we're going to agree to the firm's qualifications, not to any design specifications or any design criteria, solely their qualifications.
We had information in our last meeting packet from Mid Tower. Of course, he's, they've been our engineers for a number of years now.
Yeah.
Like I say, Madam Mayor, it was on your last agenda. It was pulled. It gave city manager Decourcy and myself time to talk to them, and, and we had some, some questions that we needed answered. A little bit further, it, it went a little bit further than qualifications. We kind of really wanted to know how well they were staffed to do what we want to do in a reasonable timeline. We kind of feel that this is something that the, the city has been longing for, for a while. And we need a water treatment plant, and we need to get moving on it as soon as we can. And I, I, I don't really feel comfortable with an engineering firm that's going to hold us back. That's simply what we did. We, we had a conversation with them. And that's why it was pulled from your last agenda, and that's why you're seeing it again.
So you feel comfortable with the issues that you brought up to Mid Tower?
Yes, I do. I, I feel comfortable with them, and I feel comfortable with getting, of course, getting this process going, of course, but if throughout this process, remember, if throughout this process, we're not satisfied with the, the specifications that, that this engineering firms bring back to us, and we want to get another firm, we can do that. Again, we're just approving the, on their, solely on their qualifications, that's all. They will not move forward one step without Mr. Decourcy's approval.
Okay. Did you have anything to add, Mr. Decourcy?
No, ma'am. Not in this town.
Any questions?
This is the well.
Yeah.
Correct?
Yes.
Okay, I want to make a water treatment.
It's the well. It's, it's going to be a water treatment plant, so it's more than a well, but yeah.
Yeah.
I'm just saying, just so we understand, this is the well we're talking about primarily putting in the other well?
Precisely.
Is the property where that's going, has that been secured? Because there was a sale happening with some of that property, and so has that been cleared up? That the property is still available?
There are still a few things going on with that transaction. We had a meeting with Swan River Water Management last week, and there is going to be a sale that, that, that will happen. No, no exact timeline on it, but we're talking in a couple of months. And it's not going to interfere with our progress in the design. When you do a, a well field, we're talking about a five-acre parcel of property, well, we have to have a buffer around that property that will actually be owned by Swan River Water Management. Water treatment facilities and wells, you have to protect that facility. You have to protect it from, from fertilizers, from farming, from anything that can get around that well. Hence, you have a big buffer around it. And that was the discussion we had with Swan River Water Management. They're, they're in a process now of putting the documents together and getting the plans together to have an exact well site, and then we'd have the buffer around it. We've got one test well up there now. We still need to drill three test wells. We still need to drill three. When we, when we do that three, we're going to rely on the engineering firm, after we get tested on the first well, to look at us along Swan River Water Management and say, okay, we're going to move our test bore over here. When you, when you test bore for wells for water in the state of Florida, it's an amazing, amazing thing. You can bore it right here where Bruce is sitting and come out with bad water. You can bore it on the other end of this desk and come out with great water. So it's, it's, it's a science that I think, I feel real comfortable with Swan River Water Management. It's a science that they pretty much got. Because, you know, they know, they know where the aquifer, and they, they've got it together. Mid Tower has worked with them on projects like this before, so I'm kind of comfortable with it. So it, it's, the timelines, when we first got into it, I, I was thinking the timelines were just too far apart. But in reality, they're not. When you come to acquiring the property and, you know, the city acquiring the property, and Swan River Management doing the buffer zones, Mid Tower doing the wells, it all, it, it all kind of, they'll do it all together.
So when you say the city acquiring the property, so there's property up there that's owned by Swan River Management District that supposedly was purchased so that a well location could be there, and I heard that that property was being sold, so...
Well, there's, that was, that, that property, and, and I think that's, that's a little over a hundred acres. We're only talking about five.
Okay, so do we buy it from them?
Well, they won't, we won't buy it from them. They'll transfer it to us.
Okay.
Again, it was, it was originally set up for two cities. And I think everybody knows Alachua and, and High Springs. And as time went along, Alachua was now opted out of it.
Yeah.
Needed.
Yeah.
So it was a great opportunity for us, and I think we all know that. But the, the property, when, when it's, when it's finally surveyed out and staked out, the property will be transferred to the city. As our water system is now our treatment plant, we own the building, we own the property, we own the wells. Believe me, Swan River Water Management doesn't want to own the building, doesn't want to own the property, and they sure don't want to own the wells. So, yeah, it'll be transferred over to us.
Okay.
Any other questions? Do I hear a motion?
Are we just making a motion to accept Mid Tower and Associates as the engineer to begin the process of the water treatment plant facility? Is that the motion?
I would advise the commission that the motion should be to select Mid Tower for, for, for the continuing services contract and direct staff to put together a contract, proposed contract with Mid Tower to bring back to the commission for final approval.
That sounds good. I'll do that.
Somebody wants to second that?
I'll second.
Okay.
Well done.
Okay. What Rich said.
Rich understood.
But we do have to vote on it, right?
We do. We need, we need a second. We do.
She did.
And then we need a vote, yes.
It's been moved and seconded that we approve the qualifications for engineering service for Mid Tower and Associates and ask that the attorneys come back with a contract. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes five zero. Next item is Consider Resolution Two Thousand and Nineteen dash N.
Thank you, Madam Mayor. Resolution Two Thousand and Nineteen dash N, a resolution of the City Commission of the City of High Springs adopting increased rates for water and wastewater services, providing for conflict, providing for severability, and provide, providing an effective date. The appropriate motion would be to pass the resolution by reading of title only. I would make a couple of comments on this. There actually may be two or three options for the commission on this tonight. What this, how this resolution is currently prepared, it, it increases the monthly base fee for water rates by one dollar, from nine dollars and eight cents to ten dollars and eight cents. And then wastewater rate schedule, there's also a dollar increase in the rates for residential and, and commercial customers. Section two of the proposed resolution also includes language that hopefully the commission can follow me on this, but it is suggesting that the CPI will then effective October one of two thousand and twenty, the beginning of our next fiscal year, the CPI will then dictate increases in rates. And the way it's drafted, it would be based on the current rates that are in effect right now, so that nine dollars and eight cents rather than ten dollars and eight cents, which we understand from staff was probably the way the commission was anticipating it would be proposed to them. So that's one option. Another option is to strike section two altogether and get rid of the CPI language. And then that would, if, if the CPI language is something the commission would be interested in, then we would bring that back at a different point in time. But this resolution would kill two birds with one stone essentially right now. The third option would be to leave the CPI language in there, but have it apply to the new rates, so that ten dollars and eight cents, for instance, rather than the nine dollars and eight cents. But as drafted, the CPI would kick in in October one, and it would apply to the rates that are in effect as we sit here right now. Questions?
So one of the things, if I remember correctly, when we had this discussion, Commissioner Jameson wanted that additional fund to go into repairs. Was, do I remember that correctly? Am I correct on that? That there, you wanted it in a designated fund to be there for waterline repairs, et cetera, et cetera. The other thing I have a problem with is this was added to our agenda late yesterday, and I know that people were noticed, but this was not on the agenda that's been up all week. And I don't really feel comfortable that, that there was good sufficient notice for the public on this because of it not being added until late yesterday.
I don't know if this assuages your concerns at all, but the, the notice, there has been notice on the consumers most recent bills. So they have been given the statutory notice, which is section one eighty point one three six. They have not been given the notice on the CPI, but because that would not kick in until October of two thousand and twenty, there would be a follow-up notice made a little bit closer to that point in time.
Is there, I didn't read in here where it says that, does it have to be in the ordinance that states that it's going into a designated fund and it can't be used for anything else? I know from a financial standpoint, we're, we're told that, and I have confidence, but does something need to be in there? I know it says in here that in a year, that dollar goes away. It basically says the dollar increase goes away a year from now, like we had asked, and the CPI takes its place. That's in here now. If I read it correctly, that's what it says. A year from now, that dollar goes back to nine oh eight, and the CPI sort of takes its place, and that's what we had talked about. So my question is, is, I guess, on the same thing. I didn't read anything in here stating that it goes into a designated and cannot be used. I don't know if that needs to be in here or not, or if that's a financial process?
It, it's, it's not in there. You're correct. I don't know if it absolutely by law would need to be put in here specifically. We'd probably have to research that and bring it back. And, I mean, Jennifer wasn't able to be here tonight. She may comment on that. As far as just from a budgetary standpoint, I'm not sure.
Madam Mayor, she relates to me that it's going to be a line item specifically for that, the maintenance, and it'll be identified that way.
Right, that's what she said. It doesn't, I'm just saying, it doesn't need to be here. I, I would suggest you take the CPI thing out. And, and for me personally, I'd like to see it at seventy percent. Because that's what we do. For me personally, my first thing is, is that's what we get from our solid waste, is we have a seventy percent of the CPI is what their rate increase is. Not one hundred percent. They, they do seventy percent. It used to be less than that, and then they were going to go higher, they, they brought it back down to seventy. You know, right? So, I mean, I would, I mean, I would entertain that we don't need to put the CPI now. We could do this one. We could, we could come back and do it, and then we could have a discussion on whether or not we want to have the full CPI or seventy percent or some sort of percentage of it to go in. Wouldn't have to happen now.
That would be perfectly appropriate. Then the motion would be to pass the resolution subject to striking section two, and then we would get with Jenny to get her a new version of that early next week to be signed in by the mayor.
Any other discussion?
I can live with it.
I'll make a motion, and then they can discuss on it, that we, we approve the resolution taking out reference to the CPI. Would that reference it?
That, that will cover it.
So when we do that, what we have now is a document that basically raises the base rate. Now, it says the rate, and I know I'm parsing on this one here. Does it need to say base rate? As opposed to rates, it says an increase in rates. Does it need to say an increase in base rate?
We can clarify that.
I just like the people when they see it. So it goes up a buck. It goes into the designated fund. That's, that starts this October. A year from now, just a year from now, the current ordinance is that dollar is rescinded. The base rate goes back to nine and so forth, and then the CPI kicks in on that next one. Okay, all that into the, all that into it. So that's my motion.
That's your motion.
Approve this as is, deleting reference to CPI.
Right.
Second?
Second.
It has been moved and seconded that we pass Resolution Two Thousand and Nineteen dash N excluding section two with the CPI. Jenny?
Mayor Jones?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Williams?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Jameson?
Yes.
Commissioner Laban?
No, because I feel like we should have given more notice on this, on the agenda.
Passes four to one. Okay, city attorney, report?
I just want to remind our commissioner and all of our city officials that we have the, save the date of December fifth for our ethics training from four to eight. And basically, whatever Commissioner Jameson says, do the exact opposite in that, in that training seminar. So, so, it's subject to that. That's all I have.
December fifth?
December fifth.
What day of the week is that? Do we know?
Find that out.
I'll tell you in a minute.
Well, he's looking that up, Madam Mayor. Well, he's looking that up, Madam Mayor.
Okay. Thursday.
I'd like to thank Evan and Eric and Bryce, who Bryce is ducking down to get out of the way for behaving. I told them, coming in here, that there's a chief of police and it's a circuit judge that are going to be watching, and any misbehavior is instant contempt to court. So they've followed directions. Been good little boys. So, thank you, boy.
Notice how close, though, they had to sit to the chief. There's a reason they were good tonight.
Is that it?
That's it.
Rich, what time again was that?
Four.
Four to 8 o'clock.
Say what?
Four to 8:00 PM.
Four to eight.
Four PM to 8:00 PM.
Yeah.
Thanks, Byron. Where at?
Rockwell Street.
At our office. Right across the street from you. It doesn't get any easier.
That's beautiful.
You're across the street.
Walk on over and.
That's awesome.
Commissioner Laban?
There'll be a First Friday next, next Friday, after Halloween. Halloween's Thursday. Friday night, the merchants will have an open house First Friday, so please let people know and come down and support the businesses.
November?
First. November 1st.
No, November 1st. Oh, okay. That's it?
Yeah. I'm short and sweet today.
Short and sweet. I'm short and sweet too, but I do have one thing. The last meeting, I asked that we revert back and take a look at possibly buying the High Springs spring since we are not going to get our rails to trails, but I am going to redraw that, withdraw, not redraw, withdraw. I, when I made that motion, I thought that property had been sold, but I found out that's not the case. So we are not going to wait that. We're going to leave sleeping dog lot.
Okay. That is.
That's it.
Special Jakes, last name.
I don't feel about farm share, November the 2nd.
Yeah. This is weekend.
So we can, Saturday. And volunteers, come along.
Okay.
And I have nothing except to say I appreciate all the people who showed up tonight for their different, for the different things that they came in for.
Secretariat variety.
Right. And it was nice to hear the Pledge of Allegiance with all those voices behind us. It was very, very uplifting. So if I hear a motion?
Motion. To adjourn.
So moved.